Good morning, everyone. We do have a call in. And we're going to go directly into a closed session to talk about some items. So with that being said, I will need everybody to accept counsel. Mr. Cullen.
We're going into a closed session to get privileged legal counsel.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're going to go to item number six so Mr. Cullen can get back to Victoria. So, item number six, discuss the approval of this motion, post statutory notice of the county's intent to sell by sealed bids with the county's interest, if any, in dedicated streets and these ones in proportion to the original ownership. Make that motion.
Make the motion.
I made the motion. All right. Now, we go back to the... It's supposed to be her. That's another. I have... You read it into the record from Ms. Mary Christine Ritter, 1901, Cockburn Lane. She states, "Well, I recognize the need for a new courthouse. I am opposed to the current plan, both three-story and two-story, which are much larger and more luxurious than necessary. We need to show fiscal restraint with public monies, just as we did with our personal financing. Also, three-and-a-half percent is not a good rate for the amount of money being borrowed." That's rated in the record.
I have a couple also to read into the record. But one of them, I think, is Kathy Kane here. And I have one from Kathy Kane and one from Brad Brumback, if I remember those. Brad Brumback from Kupno Cove writes, "There are constraints." This is on item number 25 and 24. "There are constraints on attendance at the Commissioners' Court meetings, such as the ones being held today. Among these constraints are the day and time of the meeting and COVID restrictions. Attendance or lack should not be interpreted as a lack of interest, especially as it pertains to item number 25 on today's agenda. Residents of the residence Kathy were quite loud and clear on this issue. They wanted to be able to vote on the courthouse debt. They created a petition to force this vote to be allowed, and in the ensuing election, the proposal to issue this debt was voted against by more than 6,000 residents. The proposition was defeated as part of a free and fair election. As elected officials, it is your duty to represent the will of your constituents. Those same constituents made it clear they do not want this debt issued. Just because you can find a legal way to circumvent the will of the voters does not mean you should. Revise the proposal, put on the ballot for the may-election, and let the people have their say. Any potential costs that may arise due to the delay can be blamed on a lack of better preparation on the county's part. I strongly urge you to vote against item number 25." The statement from Kathy Kane is as follows, "I'm out of town and won't be able to attend the meeting." She has a message about the item five, the size and scope of the proposed courthouse. She predicts that the recommendation will be to build a three-story facility at a higher cost. On item number 24, she predicts that after the discussion and vote whether to hire lawyers to defend the court's decisions regarding issuing debt, the vote will be to retain their legal services. And with regard to item 25, she predicts after the discussion and vote to issue tax notes, the vote will be to proceed. She adds, "A clear message was sent in November. Yet it is clear that Judge Milton, at least two commissioners, will warn the voters and to do as they please. After all, they are just, quote, 'ready for this to be over,' unquote. I too am ready for this to be over. I'm ready for my elected officials to hold workshops with public input on a building I am helping to fund and to vote on a less expensive option. I'm ready for my elected officials not to waste my money on lawyers and potential legal proceedings because they know that they are overstepping their authority by twisting the rules to choose their ones." Those are the only two I had.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hanahan, do you want to speak now or do you want to wait for item number 10?
Hello, good morning. The transmission is a little difficult to understand, but I wanted to be sure and bring our History Center report to you today. I think they have it in front of you. We've been working to establish a hybrid presence in the community, doing a lot more as we could over the Internet, but remaining open for four days a week. So we hope you'll join us for our holiday exhibit and for the new exhibit that's outside, which shows a lot of historic foundations from the community. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Hanahan, as you said, the transmission is horrible, really bad. I have...
Yeah, for... From my end, you're breaking up and freezing.
Uh. Actually, I didn't understand anything. Okay. So, would you restart Zoom? All right.
Yes, I'm on Zoom.
I reached Zoom and see if there's anything can be done about the transmission. Hey, can you hear me better?
Uh, yes, that's better.
All right. You do your presentation again, please.
Again, we couldn't hear you very well the first time. Still not good?
No, not understandable. I think everything that we wanted to report is in the written report. I'd just be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you for your report and thank you for all you do for the History Center. But get back with you, thank you.
Thank you.
So, was this a three?
No. No, this is Tranahan, where, just, she's just talking. Okay. All right.
We need to move to table number ten. We're actually still on that section of the agenda. Okay.
Do you want to wait for your item to come up, side of number?
Did I hear you say Monty Melcher, Judge?
Yeah, we got the same problem with you, sir. Garbled and, uh, can't hear you.
I'm, Mr. Melcher contacted me over the weekend and appeared for him this morning. I'm having a lot of trouble understanding everything as well. Can you hear me okay?
I had a problem with Zoom transmission.
Yes, sir. I'm having trouble understanding this.
I understand that, sir, but we're working on it. I don't know what's going on.
We can hear you, but just barely. If you'll really speak loud and clearly and slowly, we might be able to get through.
And also just sort of, isn't that Mr. Teague speaking, not Mr. Melcher? So just so, because he probably can't say that. Or is, is that Mr. Teague? Yeah.
Monty Lee Melcher.
I am here on Mr. Melcher's behalf, Judge.
Okay. So, Mr. Teague is the one that is speaking?
I will be, but I can't, I can't understand exactly much of what is being said. I did catch his name. I spoke with Mr. Castroline on late Friday afternoon. And I'm going to ask that this matter be tabled next time I'll be there in person, if possible.
All right, well, what address that when we get to it? This is, we're still on citizens to be heard. You want to wait until, you want to come back and make that suggestion? You want us to just take that suggestion with us?
I'm not.
We'll consider it, okay?
Can't understand what you're saying.
So, what the, so that was, was Mr. Teague is requesting.
That we, that we tabled number nine.
I just want to make sure.
So.
And we have one of the other people. One of the other owners on the property inherited, I think.
Is one of the other owners here? Do you want to speak, sir?
Are you talking to me?
Maybe someone in the courtroom who is another of the owners of the property, we're asking him if he wants to speak.
Nope.
I'm Monty Melcher, but I can't, I cannot hear what you're saying.
They really can't hear you now, sir. I'm sorry, I don't know what's going on, don't know how to explain it. And, uh, since.
I can hear Mr. Melcher okay, but I can't, I can't hear what's going on in the courtroom.
All right, we're going to move on to the items on the agenda.
Concerned agenda.
Concerned agenda.
Judges, I make a motion to approve the concerned agenda.
Second. Motion made, seconded, all those in favor? Ranses County has the legal obligation to the state of Texas to create a courthouse in the county state to hold the people's business. That's chapter one, nineteen point zero zero one of the Texas Local Government Code. We also have the judiciary responsibility to secure the best financial deal for the taxpayers to complete this project. We have commitments from federal and state agencies to assist us in partially funding this project and issuing, and with insurance money. And they're waiting for directions from this court. It has been three years since Parvino, all the funding entities want to see us move forward with a sure and plan of action. Several experts have told us the planning courthouse project only places heavy a burden on the local taxpayers. Continued uncertainty will only place higher price tag on overall cost of the facility. Building the courthouse at the same time in the city hall will allow both projects to take advantage of economies of scale, reducing the expense to both buildings and again to taxpayers. This, this issue has been the subject of much debate in the community. There are obviously different ways to deal with the issue, but responsibility and obligations rest with us, the Commissioner's Court. I'm asking the court for your help, your cooperation, and support to move forward on a clear plan. Now is the time for this court to step up and do its part and meet the obligations expected by the state of Texas and federal courts. With that being said, I'm talking about item number five, discussed and established in scope of the courthouse construction project. And with that being said also, uh, we have been notified that lawsuit has been filed Friday afternoon. And our bond counsel and financial counsel are here and they would like to go into the closed session discussion. So, here we go.
We have to go into closed session before we discuss the scope, then?
That's the question.
Okay. The, the.
All right, we went into closed session at nine thirty-eight, we came out at nine twenty-four.
Ten.
We had a ten twenty-four, I'm sorry, and we've had a recess to reboot our computer so the Zoom would work. We're back in session, item number five.
Testing, testing, testing.
In order to discuss it, I'd just like to say that I have heard the voters and what their wishes are, but I also have, in the Commissioners' Court, to have the judiciary duties to bring the best possible rates to the, and save money for the citizens. So, that being said, I move that the county establish the size and scope of courthouse project to be a two-story forty-six thousand four hundred and nineteen square foot with the cost of thirteen million four hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of pricing this note, these notes, and the court may consider during this meeting. I make that motion. Second, Mr. Castorline.
This is without prejudice to the position we're going to take on the tax notes themselves, just speaking to the scope of the size of the courthouse.
Right.
Okay?
Motion made and signed it. Yes, ma'am. You can get up now, yes, ma'am.
Pat Russo, one eighty-seven here in Oaks, Commissioner-elect for Precinct Three. I was disappointed when I saw the agenda Thursday afternoon with some of these items on here. I realized that Hurricane Harvey took down the courthouse. I also realized that occurred over three years ago. I know that you have had a group of people working on this. I'm not exactly sure who those people were. When the judge and I met and I asked who was the design team, he was not able to tell me at that particular time, and this was a couple of months ago. That being said, I know that as it was discussed over the last few years, and especially the last many months, there's been a discussion that we're going to get grants, we're going to be able to pay for almost all of this with grants. As it became closer and closer to the deadline with which you needed to post the legal notice on how much we were going to take out, it appeared that the grants were not going to meet what the two long-term recovery coordinators who specialized in getting grants had thought we would be able to acquire. So, at almost the last minute, the community was hit with how much money the certificates of note or certificates of obligation were going to be, and there was a discussion of a change and an increase in the size. Now, after a closed session of almost an hour, you come back with a two-story, and I believe you said about forty-six thousand square feet. My concern is this is still being rushed on the community, and right now, there is a sitting commissioner who will shortly be leaving the court and will be leaving the community. That person is getting to vote on something that will create sizable tax burns on the rest of us who are remaining here, and I think it is counterintuitive to have this discussion and vote prior to the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's been made and signed. Are all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Against, say it. Yeah. You voted against. Oh, Mr. Blaubach.
I voted to reduce the size.
You voted to?
In other words, aye to your motion to reduce the size.
Motion carries forward to one.
Judge, just one point of clarification. I think we were talking or discussing whether there was a report that you wanted to receive from Henderson.
Yes. Mr. Henderson, yes, go ahead and report to the public what you told us. Yes.
So now, instead of discussing the possible cost of a seventeen million dollar option, you can confine yourself to the lower one at thirteen.
Okay, Commissioner, I will do that. Based on the action just taken by the court, we are anticipating, and it's not definitive yet, we've, just since our meeting started, I've had thirty-eight emails back and forth between team members trying to see if we can bring a note transaction to the court this afternoon pursuant to Agenda Item Twenty-five, and I'm not able at this point to definitively say if we can or not. The team is still working on it. Based on the action of the court of thirteen million four, the question would obviously be, what would be the tax rate impact of this transaction? Tax rate impact is going to be driven by four different items. One, of course, is the interest rates on the notes. The interest rates on these notes, because of the pending lawsuit, is going to be elevated somewhat, I hope and expect modestly. I can't quantify it, but because we're going to have to extend the anticipated delivery date from the normal thirty days to ninety days. There will also undoubtedly be an interest rate penalty affiliated with the mere fact that a lawsuit has been filed and that, you know, there's a risk even in ninety days that the lawsuit cannot be settled and we will not be able to deliver the debt. That being said, the anticipated structure for this note, should we be able to pull it together today, would be financed in over seven years. The first three years would have debt service that would allow us, allow this court to fulfill its comments to the public about holding the tax rate level. As you know, the county just lowered its tax, highness tax rate from five point one cents or five point two one cents to four point seven cents. We just lowered that tax rate about half a penny, and the expectation is that we can maintain that four point seven one cent tax rate for three years. After that, if the notes are not refinanced and we have to pay off the balance of that thirteen million four over the course of the remaining four years, tax rate could go up to approximately, go up approximately seven point seven five cents above and beyond that four point seven one. However, we are anticipating a August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two call date. For people not familiar with the bond term call date, what that simply means is that we can pay the debt off early in August fifteenth of twenty-two and refinance it with no additional penalty. There would of course be interest rate risk depending on what the interest rates do between now and August twenty-second. As was reported on November the twenty-third, with a successful refinancing, we could extend the final maturity on a thirteen point four million dollar transaction to a total of no more than thirteen years from this date. So, in other words, the total length of the financing would be approximately thirteen years with a refinancing under relatively current market conditions, and that would allow the court to keep the tax rate, as was presented in the bond election, at no increase at all over the four point seven one cent tax rate. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has. Hearing none, I'll put my mask back on. Thank you.
Okay, let's go down County Roads, item number seven, discuss, approve, disapprove, request for variance on the county setback requirements at thirty-five.
How about six?
Took care of six. That was Casey Cohen.
Okay.
Thirty-three to thirty-seven Oakshore Loop to conform with the Holiday Beach Property Owners Association subdivision restrictions. Kat, are you online?
She's not.
Oh, there you are.
I'm not Kat either.
Yeah, I know.
This, there are replating four lots into three lots. This is not the plat, this is just the variance for it. Because it's a replat, it would be subject to the current subdivision regulations for setbacks, which is twenty-five front and back, eight on the sides. This will be twenty front and back and five on the sides, which is consistent with the rest of Holiday Beach, and that's what they're asking for.
What necessitates them wanting to reduce the setback?
I'm sorry?
Why are we reducing the setback requirement?
To make it consistent with the rest of Holiday Beach. That's their HOA's own setback requirements. These are all small lots and, you know, our setback.
So, this is, the twenty is currently in effect out there?
Yes. All the other properties are twenty.
And so, what you're telling me is that their HOA preceded or trumped our twenty-five percent requirement?
Their, their HOA was in existence before we had subdivision regulations.
Okay, fair enough. I just wanted to understand what the situation.
All right, any other? Have a motion?
I, well, shall we read into the record? I move to, I move to approve the variance request on county setback requirements on the property commonly known as thirty-three to thirty-seven Oakshore Loop in order to conform to Holiday Beach Property Owners Association subdivision requirements.
Second, Commissioner Castorline. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Discuss, approve, disapprove, twenty twenty-one low material bids.
This is, this is our annual bid. We're taking low bid for everything.
Have a motion.
Well, the motion requires that we refer to the firm.
Oh, wait a minute, yeah, okay.
Is this re- awarding a bid or are you putting bids out?
We have put bids out. These are.
Okay.
Who did you choose? You know, it's different for all the different materials that y'all get a spreadsheet.
But we need to put it in a, we need to put it in a form of a motion.
Is this, is this in, in any kind of order? Well, it's in some kind of order.
How many are there?
Can we just refer to the bid sheet, your bid sheet?
Yeah.
Would that be proper?
Maybe you could even say the low bidder on each.
Eleven, there's actually eleven.
Okay, I move forward to bid, to award the bid to the low bidder shown on the submission by County Road and Bridge, reference to exhibit.
And can we make this bid sheet public? The, so instead of reading it out the record, I'll just put it out on.
It'd be low bidders.
Yeah.
Low bidders.
By category. Right.
By category.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and second, Commissioner Castorline. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number nine, discuss and take action against Castorland LLC for violation of ordinance one dash twenty-ten restricting clear cutting of live oak trees.
Judge, with, in accordance with the request from the Council for Castorland LLC, I'd make a motion to table this.
Has the Zoom been reestablished where they could get on or?
But they, but they dropped off.
Yeah, being as Valerie just came up with all of her numbers and stuff in time to get it on the agenda. I mean, we have one of the principles here, I think, but I would agree with the Commissioner. I think it might be more appropriate to table it until we can.
Okay, the motion's been made. The motion's been made. Are you second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Castorline. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Discuss, approve, disapprove, third quarter twenty twenty report on Friends History Center, where we sort of got that a while ago from.
Make a motion to approve.
Was that, was that the only, we're not going to get a full report on the third quarter?
Pam's back on. I don't, Pam, go ahead. Try it again.
Pam, do you have a third quarter report?
What you should have in front of you is a report from the Friends of the History Center telling you about our holiday exhibit as well as the efforts that we've put recently into outreach and publicity. We have spent a lot of time on the internet connections that we have, engaging people there, and we find that in November, our likes, our page likes are up twenty-eight, ninety-two percent, actually. Engagements, that means how long people have stayed connected, up sixteen percent. We also have YouTube videos of different historic markers around town and have over eighty hours of watch time, which is quite a bit because every video is only oh, three to four minutes long. In October, we began Instagram postings. In October, we began Instagram postings. The other thing that we've done recently, in November first, we had a dedication of signage for the historic structures that you see in the photographs that should be included in your report to demonstrate to people how Shell Creek was built and to show them the Rocky Ledge, the limestone ledge that Rockport is named for. So all of these things is what we've been doing over at the History Center. Be happy to take any questions.
Again, Pam, we appreciate everything that you, you and your people do for the county. I don't have any questions. Anybody else?
Judge, I've moved to approve the Friends of the History Center's third quarter report as presented.
I'll second that. Motion made and second, Commissioner Castorline, all the, or Chaney, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eleven, someone want to make the motion?
I move to declare Canines Ursa and Rex. Ursa was purchased through donations from the community and Rex was purchased through Homeland Security Funds. I move to declare them both as surplus and allow both dogs to be adopted by their handlers.
Motion made and second, Commissioner Smith. I mean, just, Sheriff, do you want to? I need to.
Basically, it's just a housekeeping issue.
They can't, they can't hear you. Sorry.
They don't know who you are.
This is Sheriff Mills. In the last election, we approved a constitutional law in the state of Texas allowing or clearing the way for disposal of assets such as this for canines and for horses that, you know, mounted posses have and such. Previously, we went through this motion, but somebody raised the issue a few years ago about the legality of it because it is an asset of the county. And so the delay came in trying to establish a market value for Rex because it was a Homeland Security purchase. You can't transfer that asset until it's deemed of no value or below five thousand dollars. So we had the trainer in trying to work with him on recertification said Rex, he couldn't get him in line to work for another handler. Investigator Chappa is now my jail administrator, so we were trying to make a transition, move the dog to somebody else and wasn't going to. Ursa has health issues involving his jaw and teeth and such. And so we're bringing that motion to data. Paperwork's been submitted through the auditor's office to Homeland Security to clear Rex to where we're not going to be taxed with some asset transfer of over five thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move to declare.
No, they've already been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Discuss approve, disapprove, authorizing county judge to sign in a local agreement with the regional public defenders office, local government corporation, corporation who provide legal defense service for indigent capital murder defendants of Aransas County. As we know, this might be something we need to be done pretty quick. Do I have a motion?
Judge, I'd move to approve authorizing county judge to sign our annual interlocal agreement with the regional public defenders for capital cases to ensure that competent and effective counsel are appointed to represent indigent defendants charged with a capital case where the death penalty is sought at the trial level.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
Second.
Now, we
Chaney.
We, we tabled this a couple of weeks ago because we weren't able to nail down what the change was in our exposure. Is there more information now?
So no more information simply because this is a three-year agreement, and so we have to redo this interlocal agreement every three, you know, every year. So it's exactly the same as the past.
So we, I, I thought, I thought two weeks ago we were saying it was a new agreement. Are we, we're just renewing something in exactly the same terms it was? So no change? Okay, perfect.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Discuss approve, disapprove, authorize county judge to sign a contract with Trileaf. Someone want to read this into the record?
I, I move to approve county judge to sign a professional services contract with Trileaf Corporation for the provision of an FCC Federal Communications Commission, NEPA, National Environmental Policy Act Report for the Proposed Radio Tower Related to General Land Office GLO Grant Number Twenty oh-six-five oh-nine-eight C-two-seven-oh.
Motion made, I'm second, second, Commissioner Castorline. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm good. I'm just waiting here to answer.
Anybody have any question for Mr.?
Just, just, I, I, I think I may have asked you this by email, but I can't for life me remember if you answered already. Is it, it's all paid for? I think you said it's all paid for under the grant? And no matching funds?
No matching funds.
So no effect on budget?
Nope.
Just part of a pending rent? That's all my question.
It's just a process.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Discuss approve, disapprove, authorizing county judge a deficit amount to Texas Department of Transportation for Aransas County, Aransas Pathways Southern Trails Project previously approved if this deficit amount is eighty thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars, sixteen cents. The funds will be paid for, but paid pathway bond funds. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Second, Commissioner.
Got a quick question, John. Is this the same deficit that was projected back many moons ago when this project?
The grant was, the grant was awarded almost five years ago, and so it's just gotten more expensive to do this project.
How much money do we have in that?
We have about a hundred and, between a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand. So we have enough funds.
After this payment.
Before this, before the.
So we, we may have one smaller project left out of it.
So no impact on budget because the money is already there?
All right, motion made and seconded. Ms. Russo, you wanted to speak to this?
Perhaps Mr. Strauthman can answer just if the nature of the deficit amount is something that was anticipated. And I heard him say that the grant was awarded five years ago, and I was wondering if it was the hurricane that possibly delayed the construction of that Southern Trail project. Thank you.
Yes, the, the, the grant was awarded. We made some decisions to let Texas do the, do the actual construction of the project, and then Hurricane Harvey hit. We held off because of the construction and, you know, we're going to be putting a sidewalk project in, so we did not want to do that while all this construction was going on, on people's homes and demo and stuff like that.
One, one quick question. What's the total cost of the project?
It is about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
About a ten percent increase. Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss approve, disapprove, authorize county judge to sign a contract document to the extent existing Microsoft Enterprise License Agreement through reseller SHI Government Solutions for another three years under Texas Department of Information Resources Contract DRI TSO dash four oh nine two to be, to begin January first, two thousand twenty-one. I'll make that motion. I have a second.
I'm second.
Second, Commissioner Castorline, all those in favor?
Colin, wait, Colin, is this, can you tell us what the annual amount is and it's, is it already in the budget for next year?
This amount is budgeted. It's a roughly, it's actually less than what we budgeted for for this year's renewal and subsequent renewals. It's fifty-two thousand dollars.
A year?
A year.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Someone want to make the item number sixteen? Read that into the agenda.
I move to, Judge, I move to approve contract amendment number one for Pgal, PGA L Inc., Architect to Initiate Design Plans for the Plaza Portion Open Space Features for the Downtown Anchor Project Using Available Community Development Broad Grant Disaster Recovery Funds Awarded to Aransas County.
Motion made.
Second.
Second.
So if, if I understand this correctly, we can do this without taking a position on the tax notes because we have other funds that are able to cover this part of the project?
That is correct.
Okay.
Hey, John, there, there hasn't been any design work. I mean, this includes the parking lot that's.
Exactly. It's the parking lot, the plaza, the community building, everything that's not affected with the building itself. So we can get the design work started on that project, part of the portion.
Ms. Russo, you want to speak to this?
Thank you. At the meeting, I believe July thirteenth could possibly be the July twenty-seventh meeting. As they were discussing where the courthouse and city hall would be, I know that Sheriff Mills was questioned and in his response mentioned that if the courthouse and the city hall were flipped in their location, that it would be much more advantageous for moving the prisoners from the jail to the courthouse for trial than the current layout. Now, I'm not sure if any of that has been considered, and I'm not sure if this plaza is built as it was shown at that time. If that would still allow the possibility of those two buildings to be switched. But it seemed like there was great community support for the possibility that city hall and the courthouse would switch, especially due to what the sheriff pointed out relative to prisoner movement. And I just am curious if that decision could be made if this plaza is in construction at that time.
It possibly could have been, but as you know, the city's building is going forward and they own their property. And they can't build on county property, so I don't think so.
Could we, could we make this motion broad enough to include that possibility in case we are able to talk the city into a flip even at this late date? If, I mean, maybe they are, and I'm just saying, can we preserve the possibility in case we're wrong?
Well, the flipping the properties might bring some added expenses because I think.
Quite a bit of.
It might not turn out to be a good idea. I'm not saying that we should decide it should be flipped. I'm just saying, can we make this authorization broad enough to cover that possibility if it seems like it's a good idea?
Judge, we'll be glad to look at it, but I think you're correct that it would involve a lot more expense.
Okay, so I guess what Commissioner Lobach's saying, like to make the motion with the stipulation that if possible in the very near future without a lot of expense, she'd like to put that in the motion.
I just want to preserve the possibility. I'm not, I'm not trying to prejudge whether it's possible at all. I just, i- i- if it is possible, I'd like not to foreclose it today. If it's not possible, then it's not possible. It's an amendment to the motion to clarify.
I'll second the amendment. The end of that, what Commissioner Smith said to to approve contract amendment number one for PGA L Inc., Architect to Initiate Design Plan for Plaza Portion.
It's just a contract.
Recovery funds are awarded to Aransas County while still preserving the option of
Considering.
Considering
Of swapping the, right.
Swapping the locations between city hall and courthouse.
Right.
If possible, is that kind of what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would like to offer something else to think about in plan, when we're planning this. You know, one of the things, you know, kind of gets back to what you're talking about. They would like to have the courtroom close to the where the prisoners are. I would think in the plan and since we were thinking that in the future, we're going to need more courtrooms, that we should keep in mind the possibility of rather than enlarging the courthouse, that we might build a courtroom closer to the jail.
Yeah.
To have a secure entry from the jail to, in the future, not right now, but.
Well, that's a possibility. All right, motion is made and seconded with a, anyway, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Seventeen, someone want to read that into?
I move to approve authorizing county judge to sign a federally assisted airport development grant between Aransas County and the Texas Department of Transportation, Texas DOT, to reconstruct apron drain slash sinkhole and perform an inspection on the airfield drainage.
I'll second that. Is, I don't know if Mike Gear is on the phone, but I, I remember him telling us before this was a non-budget item because you'd already set aside enough funds for the matching.
That's true. We do have, we budgeted about a hundred thousand dollars every year for grants and possible grants. There's enough left before the end of this year, and I believe I'd have to ask Jackie. I know I submitted the invoice for it. I don't know if it's been, if it was paid yet. I, I can't imagine that it has been because the, we haven't authorized the judge to sign it, but we did pass the resolution last month. So, yeah, the money's there for it and, and I'd like to try to get it paid for this year if we can.
And what, the matching funds were what?
Thirty, thirty-three thousand dollars.
Okay.
All right, well, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Discuss approve, November twenty twenty, Indigent Healthcare Report. Let's go right.
Total expenditures for the month of November is forty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars a year to date, which is the third month of the fiscal year, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five. We did have two inpatient hospital visits. That's why it's a little bit more than normal this month. Any questions?
Basically, we're averaging about thirty thousand a month, which was.
About thirty.
Probably down below the four percent level on the G, G R T L.
Well, for the year, since the third month, we're at point eight percent of the, the gross revenue.
I was analyzing it out. Make a motion to approve, Judge.
Motion made.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Lobach. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number nineteen, without having to read all of it, I can tell you that this, well, okay, read it all. Somebody want to read it all because we need a vote.
It's two alternative, it's two alternative motions. And before I would know which one if either to make, I would need to know what the cost was of the second alternative.
Well, actually, uh.
Are we thinking about just dropping it?
Mr. Stroud has said he's going to drop it, so we just need to take it off the agenda.
Okay.
Because.
So I move to take it off the agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discuss approve. Item number twenty. Somebody want to read that into?
I move to approve paying about five vacation days to jail auto and the county clerk's office.
I'll second that. We've done this before, correct?
No, I, I've got a question about that. Is this Don here?
Yes, we, we need you at the.
And the auditor.
Microphone. Sorry.
Yeah. This can you do it for one, you got to do it for all.
Yes, sir.
And with emergency declared, the vacation days can be rolled over to next year, right?
They could be, yes, by a stand the fact that we declared emergency, but nobody was really required to not take their vacation time this year based on this emergency.
So rather than actually pay this lady and set precedent, why couldn't we just roll her days over into next year?
Pay her only?
No, no, roll her over.
Everybody.
Roll her over. We could.
Do we have a maximum number?
But the problem is, is if you do that for one, from an HR standpoint, if you do that for one, you really should do it for everyone. The only thing that I can see that would make it a little bit of an exception for Carrie's office is the fact that she is a new employee in her position. Normally, if an employee is moving from one department into another department, we can pay out those hours from the original department they started at so that the new employee, the new department head is not absorbing that burden. So you could consider the fact that she is a new department head in this position, but.
We're setting precedent we pay, which is concerning to me.
Well, we're also setting a precedent if we roll over or not.
No, by policy, we do have it in the policy that if there was an emerg, a federal emergency declaration that we can roll over all employees over eighty into the following year for that one year only.
Okay.
So that is in our policy. That is a possibility to do, but we'd have to do it across the board.
Forward into next year?
We have to roll everybody, you're saying. We can't just roll her.
Everybody that had worked through the emergency.
Idea how many days you would be talking about for other people?
I do not. I don't think there are many. I've even spoken with the sheriff.
A lot of people had used most of their.
I do have estimated on what we have right now. This is not taking into account anyone who takes vacation in this last two years of the, the calendar year. It's about, I'm sorry, two weeks, I'm sorry. It's seventeen hundred and nineteen hours, which would equate to about thirty-nine point six thousand dollars.
So do we, I mean, do we seriously have a problem, given that it has been an unusual year and hard to take vacation? Do we seriously have a problem rolling over that many people? Do we seriously have a problem rolling over that many people? I wouldn't.
No.
I don't, I don't think there's an issue with that. I mean, it increases your liability, but then it would just be paid out as they take the time.
Right.
And if they don't take it in this next year, then they still would lose it.
Right, they're still subject to forfeiting it, but they don't have to forfeit it this month.
Right. We're allowed to carry over 80 hours, and so any, anybody who would not use it before December of next year would.
Well, you got approximately 20 employees that...
There's probably more than that. I mean, yeah, if you look at it, say a week.
1,700 hours or so, so.
Now
One, employees or...
Now the question is, I don't think the agenda item's broad enough, is it to allow us to do that? Would we have to come back to this on the 28th? So what I would move is to table this and with the expectation we'd add to the agenda in two weeks, that instead of paying out five vacation days to Ms. Otto, we would instead roll over everybody who's eligible on the grounds of the federal emergency.
Okay.
I'll second that and withdraw my previous motion.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Discuss approve, disapprove reimbursement to Aransas County for independent contractor cost of $20,800 from the CDAs off of the forfeiture account.
Somebody raise their hand.
What's this one about?
I'll make that motion, so we, do I have a second? Second. Now, discuss it.
Okay, so what are we doing and why?
So this is the forfeiture account. So this is an account that's controlled by the office itself. Aransas County spent extra funds on an investigator, and that's one of the uses you can use the forfeiture funds for, and so just reimbursing the county.
So the status now is the county's out of pocket $20,800 for an investigator? And will we get paid back out of, out of your office's forfeiture account?
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
In effect, yes.
And is there an alternative way to treat this? I mean, can it, what, I'm, why is it happening this month? Can it just roll over until next year? What's, what are our options?
It's because of the end of the year options.
It's because of what?
End of the year. End of the year.
So it needs to be done by the end of the year, or we can't get it done?
Well, we could, but I'm not here, beginning of next year. So I'm trying to wrap up all my loose ends.
I move to approve reimbursement to Aransas County for independent contractor.
We've already done that.
What am I doing?
We have a second?
Head is taken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
I'm abstaining on this one. I still don't really understand what our options are. I'm not sure I understand why the new county attorney can't take care of it, and I'm not sure what the investigation was for or any of the background.
So you're voting against it?
Uh, I'll abstain.
For far, one abstention. Discuss approve, disapprove budget line item transfers and amendments.
We have none at this time, Judge.
It's always a good one.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discuss approve, disapprove accounts payable, payroll, payroll liabilities.
They are all normal payroll unpayables. I do have one that I'm walking in. We have a hot check that was collected that we do need to reimburse the, the business. It's for $5,678.16.
It did not get in the office in time, but I did want to make sure they got their funds.
Motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Castro, Cheney.
Cheney.
All those in favor? Starts with a C. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 24. Someone want to read that one into?
Judge, I move to approve authorizing the Bickerstaff Heath Dogato Acosta Law Firm to defend Aransas County in potential litigation related to the county's authority to issue financial instruments and to file any necessary action to protect the county's authority to issue financial statement.
Second. Second, Commissioner Castro line. All those in favor?
Aye.
No, not unanimous. I vote no.
Vote no, okay. Item number 25.
Well, that's going to have to be taken up.
Well, yeah, I think we still have to read it into record, though.
Yes, sir. Judge, if you might, let me address you a minute.
Yes, go ahead.
Judge and Commissioner David Mendez from Bickerstaff, bond counsel on the project. This item is, relates to the potential issuance of tax notes, as the item clearly states. And as we know, in item number five, the court kind of gave us some direction, get provided Mr. Henderson and his team with some direction to attempt to market that, that set of obligations. What I'm asking the court to do is to, if you have no other business at this time for the court, to recess this session, to recess the session, to reconvene at, as soon as Mr. Henderson has received pricing information, so that we can then present that to the commissioners and see if you all want to authorize those obligations. And so, I'm going to sort of defer to the county attorney here in that, in this respect, as to whether you all typically request to a time certain, or so that, so that we can, and if we don't have pricing, Mr. Henderson, do you know what time pricing would?
I don't at this point. Given it's 11:15, I'll request no sooner than 2:00 P.M. And let's, let's do it 2:00 P.M. And I hope we have something, we may have to sit around until 2:30. I would suggest no sooner than 2:00 P.M.
I would like to suggest that there are a lot of things to discuss about this besides this precise pricing, which we don't expect to be a huge surprise to us. We should discuss the merits of moving forward at this time to issue notes without an election, which is the issue that's galvanized the interest of the community and caused us to be subjected to a lawsuit.
You know, as long as you can recess and maintain your business meeting in time to receive that, yeah, that's y'all's call, or however you want to handle it.
We just can't call a question.
We just can't call a question.
Right, but we can certainly discuss whether we should be approving a tax note at all.
In some jurisdictions, until a motion is made and seconded on a question, it's not ripe for deliberation, but I don't know how you guys handle it.
We just haven't done it yet. We really don't. And I say yet, they may have before, you know, last seven years before me, but, and frankly, it's up to the court, you know, it's up to the judge.
I just question whether we should make all these people wait three hours to come back again.
And, and of course, there's nothing to prevent you from taking comment. I mean, I think there were two or three people that had reserved comment, period. Maybe you take their comment and then recess, and then you come back and do your deliberation. Until you have a price and a, and all that, I don't know that it's right.
Something to buy.
But at least so that people are not.
Yeah, people that signed up to speak on 25, we can let them speak and then recess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Not only hearing for the public, I would like the court to take up the discussion of whether it's a good idea to move forward with tax notes. It's going to be a separate issue whether we should.
Get a motion and second.
Well, I'm not moving for it because I'm going to be voting against it, but somebody should move for it, and we should talk about it in front of the public and not make them come back at 2:30.
I think that's what we just all decided would happen, that they would be able to comment.
Mr. Hutt, would you like to speak to?
We did just decide that, and I'm saying that's a bad decision. We should talk ourselves about why we're going to pursue tax notes. Let's start with hearing from the public, but we shouldn't just stare at them and make them come back in three hours.
Mrs. Sampson showed up today. This is the first time she's been to a commissioners' court meeting. She didn't know that, to, she didn't know that she needed to sign up to speak. I would like to give her my time to speak, if that's acceptable.
Judge Mills and county commissioners, my name is Rhonda Sampson. I'm here as a voice of the people. I'm new to the community. I came here directly after Hurricane Harvey to work with the debris cleanup and the reconstruction after the storm. I have 30 years of disaster relief and recovery with the Red Cross and other, other, other organizations. When I came here, I came as a private citizen. My partner and I fell in love with this community and the people, the people of this community. We know that there's an obligation, and we do have to have a courthouse. We're standing in one. Why? Why at this period of time would this court place such a burden on the taxpayers when the taxpayers signed a petition with 5% or more of our population in order to say no? Let us be heard. Take our voices into consideration. We don't work. This is tyranny. When you go against the voters and decide that you're still going to place a tax burden on their backs without their voices, without their representation, something is wrong. This is still America, and that's what I have to say.
I think we ought to discuss the portion of this motion that depends on the choice between waiting for an election in May versus proceeding now without an election on a tax note basis. That's what these people have come to hear. They don't care about the pricing we're going to get at 2:30, which is a highly technical issue. We can still recess and, before you take a final decision, until we get the, the technical pricing information, but the main issue today is, should we be doing a tax note at all? And the citizens have a right to hear us explain why we think we're justified going forward.
I've also heard, Your Honor, just for housekeeping, 3 o'clock is probably a better time for a meeting, so just.
3 o'clock, I would think that would be.
There's an unidentified number on Zoom, and I'd like to find out if it's Andrew Kane, because when he left.
Right, he says.
He was joined by Zoom.
Andrew, is that you?
Kane, are you on Zoom?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Andrew Kane, 2106 Lakeview Drive. Thank you for your time. This isn't about doing what you think is best, and I've heard y'all say that several times. It is about doing your job. You're a representative and a representative of government. Because the voters casted votes, they elected you to represent them. Yes, of course, there are many decisions we trust you to make, the best decision force you can. This project isn't one of those, because the citizens have spoken. They rallied in person during COVID to sign petition in order to get the voices heard. Then y'all did the right thing, and you put it on the ballot. Y'all appeared to understand by doing so, you do really need to listen to the voters on this. So why is it after the election that you called for? Do you feel the voices now should be ignored? Their lawful voices dismissed as if they never had casted them? I know everybody has an opinion on what's right, what's wrong, and what's the right size and why. This is bigger than that. If you pass these tax notes, you're telling the citizens of this county that their votes do not matter. You're also telling the citizens of the county that your votes don't matter. You're also going to tell the citizens of the county that the commissioners' courts, court orders, and votes don't matter. I'm going to refer to you to August 13th of this year. Y'all signed it, just two pretty seals on it, it's been notarized. It's a court order. It's order 01320. I'm going to read to you part of everything y'all voted for unanimously and all signed. Whereas, based on input received from the community, the commissioners' court has determined prior to issuing any debt obligations of the county for these projects, including any specific obligations, that an election should be held to determine whether said governing body shall be authorized to issue bonds of said county in amount for the purposes herein identified. Y'all voted for this, y'all signed it, it's a court order. Prior to issuing any debt obligations, that an election should be held. I'm sure you can get a lawyer to argue that, well, the county messed up, and they can't dismiss their legislative rights to issue tax notes. I'm sure you get an attorney to do this, and I'm sure you can get an attorney to justify that. But that's not what this is about. This is what's doing right for the people. The people's word matters. Does this own courts matter? I made copies of this and left it with Wendy for y'all to, and I highlighted it. Is that your signature on this court order? That you agreed and told the citizens, based on input received from the community, commissioners' court has determined prior to any issuing of any debt, the election should be held. Now we're hearing, probably because of the lawsuit I'm part of, that we're talking 69 days out. I mean, how far is it to May? May, the fifth month, we're in the 12th month? It's five months to get this right. Let's, let's have citizens have their voice. Let's do this again, let's do it right, and let's do this on a 25-year bond or 20-year bond in May. I'm sure you have a lot better chance in May, and you won't lose the citizens' trust in this court. Thank you.
Mr. Rutledge, would you like to speak?
Good afternoon, good morning, Judge Mills and commissioners. My name is Kristi Rutledge, and I've resided in Precinct Three at 1411 Dana Drive for 15 years. I've lived here for 18. Today, the court has decided to take up the issue of tax notes, but the real issue at hand is this. Will this court take the aggressive and upper-handed move to circumvent the November 3rd bond election? Doing so would forever change the course of Aransas County. Passing tax notes will pit the Aransas County Commissioners Court against the people, and in extremely harsh and abusive manner, you will declare 6,211 votes against Proposition A null and void. I ask you to look deeper at the issues. Look beyond the red tape of Hurricane Harvey ideas and project planning completed long before our current economic crisis. These issues might be important, but in reality, they are very trivial and a distraction from the most pressing questions at hand as you consider nullifying the bond election. What you decide today will determine if December 14th, 2020, will be remembered as one of the darkest days in the history of Aransas County. This court will decide if the votes of citizens in Aransas County and this court have any meaning at all. Do the votes of the majority have power, and do they have effect? Or is there an election, nothing more than an inconvenient formality, as William Whitson indicated when he told the court, public input is the thing that kills us because we have to comply with that grant condition? Is the election the bait and switch you planned all along? If first certificates of obligation didn't work, then general obligations and a vote? And then if that doesn't work, then pass your tax notes. Voters be damned. Is our election just smoke and mirrors to get what you want? What is really at stake as you consider circumventing the election with tax notes? It's the ever-pressing issue facing government and the people across America today, and it must be this court's priority. Do our elections have integrity? It is up to you, Judge Mills and commissioners. Please take this question to heart. Look past the surface issues and consider what is really at stake today. When you make your vote for or against tax notes, what you're really voting about is all that we hold dear as Americans. Aransas County voters went to the polls and overwhelmingly rejected Proposition A, and not because we were misled, confused, or uninformed, as some have told you in this court. Aransas County voters rejected debt for Proposition A because we are informed and because we do not consent to this debt. We, the people of Aransas County, got it right in the November 3rd bond election. You have a courthouse, and it was designated in September of 2017, and you moved into this building in January of 2018. The petition that forced the certificates of obligation to a vote was not about a two-story or three-story debt. It's about, in fact, letting the voters decide. It's about giving the people of Aransas County consent through an election. Judge Mills, when you were asked about the petition, you told the news, it's not that they are against a courthouse, it's just that they want a voice in the project, and we appreciate that. So what's changed? Do you only appreciate our voice when we go along with you, with what you want? On August 13th, 2020, each of you signed the court order to call an election for any debt that would be issued for the courthouse. You made an agreement. You made an agreement with yourselves and with us, the voters. Judge Mills and Commissioners, you will be held accountable for the decisions you make today, and you will have to answer these questions. Did you honor the votes of the majority? Did you ensure the integrity of our election? Did you give dignity and liberty to the people who elected you? The choice is up to you. And I hope you consider it carefully, what's really at stake. And I hope that you value all that is dear to Americans, more than relatively minor details about grants and things like this that can be worked out later after citizens' consent in an election. Vote against tax notes. Bring us back another proposal in the May election. Honor our votes. Do your job. Honor your court order. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Judge Mills, County Commissioners. The courthouse was put to a vote and was voted down. It was voted down by the people?
Your name, please.
Oh, Candace Sargent.
Yeah, pull it down. There you go.
It was voted down by the people who would ultimately have to pay for it, not those that would profit from it. It was voted down to give the county commissioners a chance to revise this massive debt and come back with a much more reasonable and affordable courthouse. We, the people, did not vote this down for you to ignore those you are here to serve. It would also appear that your word means absolutely nothing as you signed a court order to put it before the people for vote and to allow input from the citizens for something more reasonable. To make matters worse, you would spend our tax dollars to hire attorneys to go against what the citizens voted for, and again, to go against your signed word. When your own words and actions go against the people you are here to serve, you have become a dictator. You are overriding the will of the people. This rejection was to go back to the drawing board and sell us a revised, reasonable version, then put it to a vote by the people who would ultimately have to pay for this. We should never, ever have to incur such a debt without a vote from the citizens paying for it. What you are doing is wrong. Anyone who speaks in favor of this and will be profiting or those that receive tax abatements, your words are hollow and meaningless. I have traveled extensively for work and for pleasure in the United States, and I have never or anyone I know have ever gone to any city or town to see the courthouse. No one comes to Aransas County or Rockport to see the courthouse. They come here to fish, enjoy the beach, and go shopping. It is also not an anchor, in my opinion, for any business to come downtown excluding if you are a bail's bond office, maybe a pawn shop, or maybe an attorney's office. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I was going to ask you next.
When I ran for office last March, I ran on the condition or on the promise that I would try to restore the ABCs of county government, accountable to voters, build trust, communicate openly. I was very proud and pleased that you all decided to allow the voters to have a say in the new courthouse. I am very embarrassed and ashamed that you are trying to find an end run around what they gave you as their clear direction, and I hope you will reconsider and not issue these tax notes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? That will recess until 3 o'clock.
Yeah, or you can set up with Colin to Zoom if you want.
...reconvene the meeting. We've been notified that the people that are working behind the scenes need another 15 minutes. And to fill a little gap, I'll ask Mr. Henderson to step up and give us an update of what's going on. Turn your mic on.
Okay. Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
For the record, my name is Robert Henderson. I have the honor and the privilege of being the financial advisor to Aransas County representing RBC Capital Markets. Per the direction of the court this morning with respect to the size of the transaction, we have resized the transaction to $13,400,000 in terms of proceeds to a construction account. When the final numbers come out, I expect the numbers to be slightly less than $13 million in par. I mean, slightly less than $13,400,000 in par, but proceeds to the account would be $13,400,000. I want to congratulate David Mendez and his team, as well as Tom Spurgeon and his team at McCall-Parkerston Horton, who is a firm acting as underwriters counsel. These two law firms have worked very cooperatively together to revise the preliminary official statement to not only reflect the forward delivery date, but to reflect some very important disclosure language with respect to the lawsuit, the risk of the forward delivery, and other pertinent matters related to this transaction. I alluded this morning, and I'm going to take the opportunity now, Judge, I don't know if you saw my email, about 12:30. I alluded this morning to some of the additional risk and cost factors that are related to a forward delivery. I was not able to copy the entire Commissioner's Court because frankly, I didn't have Mr. Castroline or Mr. Cheney's email, but I did copy Ms. Lawback and Mr. Smith. There were four things that I outlined in that email, and again, it effectively reflected what I said this morning, which is the forward delivery aspect of this transaction is not normal. We normally would close in 30 days, and in fact, we're looking at closing now in 90 days, which is a 60-day extension to allow for additional time to hopefully positively resolve the lawsuit issues. That extended period of time in terms of capital commitment by the investors requires an increase in yield. We also have the risk that the transaction simply won't close if we don't get a resolution to the lawsuit, and there's some risk. We have the risk of a termination because documents may or may not be adequately revised. We don't think that's going to be a problem, or that there may be additional matters that have to cause additional revisions to the documents, and that could be an issue. And then finally, of course, just the news itself that the transaction is subject to a lawsuit has some impact. I had indicated this morning, when I was asked about what the potential impact of that would be, and I said 25 to 30 basis points, probably more than half a point. The great news is, is that it looks like, from a yield perspective, the impact is going to be less than what I had predicted. We ought to be under 20 basis points in terms of the impact of the noted lawsuit, the forward delivery, and so forth. We have gone out into the market. There was a lot of discussion with the underwriters as to what couponing would occur on that, and I think everybody probably understands, if you don't, I'll do my best to explain it, that what we are issuing here are fixed income securities. And there are three variables that impact the pricing of fixed income security. One is the stated coupon. The other one is the yield. Stated coupon is the interest rate that is actually printed on the bonds that the investor would expect to get paid. Then there's the yield on the bond, which is what they really actually expect to get paid in terms of their earnings, because that coupon can be above or below actual current market yields. And then there is, of course, the timing of the payment, the date of the final maturity. And that's one of the aspects of this. Very short final maturity, seven years, but we've got a substantially shorter date of August 15th, 2022, as to the call date. So those three factors combine to generate what's called a dollar price, the actual amount of money that investor would pay for this transaction. When you look at this transaction, and Ms. Orr is waiting on numbers. You're going to see a couple of different numbers. One's called the all-end TIC, the true interest cost, considering what the gross spread is, the fees to the transaction are, and of course, the yields on the bonds. Yes, sir?
Figured on a seven-year basis?
Yes, sir. And the other one is the arbitrage yield. The arbitrage yield does not reflect the costs associated with the transaction, but does reflect the actual yield that the investors are earning. That number is going to be less than 1%. So we're talking about couponing at 3%, actual yields to the investors of less than 1%, and that's going to combine to a par value then of about, we think, $13,120,000, $40,000, something like that. Those are the final numbers that we are looking at. The holdup at this point is that the senior manager on the underwriting team, BOK Securities, because this is a forward delivery, has to get special, what's called, for lack of a better word, big boy investor letters. We've got to get the people that are buying the bonds to actually sign letters saying that they understand this is a forward delivery. They understand that there are risks to non-delivery because of the lawsuit, and that they've been adequately advised of the special disclosure of this transaction. So what we're waiting on now is that senior underwriter to confirm that all of his buyers onboard were signing this big boy investment letter. And then in terms of the actual numbers, we are communicating with the senior underwriter as to such matters as his legal, his counsel's legal fees. Again, Mr. Mendez and Mr. Spurgeon and their respective teams have worked, not just today, but they worked all weekend long. We became aware of the lawsuit late Friday, and these lawyers and their teams have been working all weekend to get all this stuff together so that we could bring a price. And now we just have to figure out what the final fees and those sorts of things are.
Can you give us a comparison to financing this way versus if we waited and had an election and issued bonds like we were going to do in the past one? Can you give us a comparison between the two interest rates and different things?
Obviously, I can't predict what interest rates would be in June or July, but assuming all other things being equal, we would not have had the about 20 basis point extra yield that we are having in terms of the uncertainty of the forward delivery and so forth. So that 18 to 20 basis points in extra yield is an easy one to identify. We are going to have higher than expected issuance costs. We just talked a little bit about, you know, the increased underwriters' counsel fees. My fees will stay the same. I'll let Mr. Mendez speak to his. Most of the costs, the rating costs, the document preparation costs, most of those are going to stay the same. Our gross spread, the gross spread is the fees that go to the underwriter and to their counsel are going to be a little elevated, probably a buck, buck and a half a bond, if we have a bond being $1,000 denominations. So if we've got $13,100,000 worth of bonds, you're talking about 13,100 bonds, you're talking about a buck and a half, $18,000, $19,000 in additional cost as a function of that gross spread. This is my partner, Dusty. With your permission, Judge?
Yes, sir, Dusty. Sir? Yeah? No, I'm in front of the podium. All right, I'll step away from the podium. There's a waiting for him. Go ahead. Okay. How long have we been? That's not, that's not unusual. Yeah, I'll keep talking. They love to hear me talk. Okay, that was my partner, Dusty.
Trailer informing that the underwriter is still in communication with a couple of the key buyers. They are requesting a little additional adjustment in price because apparently they weren't aware they were going to have to sign this big boy investment. because apparently they weren't aware they were going to have to sign this big boy institutional letter, which also means they have to hold it in their portfolio. But the amount of adjustment they're talking about, I feel like is, is very reasonable under the circumstances. From what he. Because I, I'm not going to, they're not finished. So I want to give them, I'm going to, it's, it's what I would consider reasonable, and you will certainly know the answer before the, the, the court takes, takes a, a vote, vote on it. Commissioner Cashline, did I answer your question, or was there?
Was that the only change you seen?
I answered at this point in time, Bob, until we finally get the final.
Final numbers, I hope, will be coming still in fifteen.
I think what, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, but he was asking that if we had gone forward and done this on a regular basis by issuing bonds versus the way we're having to do it now, what is the additional cost involved interest-wise during that seventeen-month period until the first call? Because you can't really talk about going forward out there on interest rates beyond the first call date.
Well, I think we're asking you to compare doing this in a May election versus doing it right now via a tax note, isn't it? You're asking?
Yeah, that's kind of what, more what I was.
Compare what it would cost us in May.
Bonds and their, I believe, their longer periods and.
I, I think that's the commissioner's school, right after. If you did the G O bond, I'm sorry, Judge, for the record, it's David Mendez.
Well, nobody can hear you, David. I'm sorry.
Might remove the mask to. Get next to, you can use.
I'm going to, can I sit here next to Jackie? Okay, great. Well, so again, David Mendez.
Pretty close, so they, they can't hear you at home on Zoom.
David Mendez, I'm bond counsel on the project. And I think the point that the commissioner was making is if we sell, and, and you can address this, I'll turn it back over to you, but in a G O bond, the, 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 the number of years over which you may amortize the obligations is substantially different. So what we're doing here is issuing a note with the likely need.
I was going there.
So, so that's what he's looking for. Sorry.
So the answer to the question is, there are three things. One is you aren't paying an interest rate premium because of the forward delivery, the increased risk of the transaction due to a potential failure to deliver, the lawsuit being filed and the credit impact of that. So slightly higher interest rates, slightly higher cost of issuance because of the additional disclosure that's required. Beyond that, we are looking at a seven-year maturity here that in order to, to meet the intent to not raise interest rate, I'm sorry, tax rates over the life of the transaction, we're going to have to refinance this debt in order to extend it to a, a period of time commensurate with not. Had we done a, a, a normal election, we would have likely, I would have almost certainly recommended financing term of twenty years, given the, the useful life and that what that would have done was have, would have allowed us to lower the tax rate from the already reduction from last year from five point two one cents to four point seven one cents. And we were expecting to hold that for three more years, given the existing debt of the district, of, of the county, rather, and then that the tax rate would fall beyond even the, the, the four point seven one percent rate. Because of those structuring differences, twenty years without having to do a refinancing, seven years to take it out potentially to thirteen years, or, you know, per Commissioner Lawback's question this morning, there, there's nothing magical about thirteen years, other than we don't want our tax rate to go above four point seven one cents. We could extend it beyond that thirteen years and, and have the tax rate fall as well. So I know that's not a.
But you feel like that if we do this and refinance it over thirteen years, we won't have to raise the tax rate that we're at right now?
That's correct. I, I would not anticipate at all you're having to raise the, the tax rate above the four point seven one cents it is now. And Commissioner Lawback has, has asked, boy, if I could answer her question about what interest rates are going to be, I wouldn't be here. I'd be on my yacht in the Caribbean. If you could make those kinds of predictions, but what I can predict is this. Even if interest rates go up, there are other variables, including the final maturity of the debt, that will allow us to still ensure your tax rate does not increase by more than four, or above four point seven one cents. Because if interest rates go up, instead of refinancing after thirteen years, we can refinance after fourteen years or fifteen years. So there are other mechanisms that we can, that are, are other variables, as a way to put it. There are other variables at play that we can use to make sure that our tax rate does not go up, even if in fact, interest rates go up.
Yeah, but, but Bob, the point is, if you start fooling around with the maturity by increasing it, you're still increasing the amount that taxpayers here have to fund irrespective of what the rate is.
That's, that's true. And, and, and I would say this, is that given we've got a seven-year final maturity in this tax note issue, even if we refinance it out to thirteen years, we were originally going out twenty, twenty-two years on the bond election that was held last November. And, and the, and the aggregate average maturity would still be substantially less than it would have been, and therefore, the total amount of interest that the taxpayers in this county are going to pay is going to be less because we're paying it off.
Why didn't we just do tax notes to start with then?
But you're talking about a thirteen-four versus a seventeen-two thirty-five, too.
No, I, I understand that, but, but either way, whether we're doing thirteen-four or seventeen, if you finance something over thirteen years, instead of financing it over twenty years, it costs you less money in interest rates.
But then why, why did we decide to do a long-term?
Well, the reason being is that this is not the only capital outlay project that Aransas County has. You've got other constitutional obligations to provide services. And the idea is by not short front-end loading all the debt and keeping the tax rate at that four point seven one cents, the county would have had the opportunity to, to address other capital needs in the county, be it county roads, bridges, I don't know, airports, solid waste, whatever it was. You had the ability to do additional capital improvements within that same four point seven one cent tax rate. When we get ready to refinance this debt in, in, in August of twenty twenty-two, we need to have as a conversation with the Commissioners Court, what other financial needs do you have of the county? And, and it may be that if you've got no other financial requirements, we, we do it at seven years.
We're about to double our tax burden, and it's in, it's in contemplation to add even more to that during the next seven years?
That's not for me to decide. That's for the Commissioners Court.
You're preserving that. It was important to preserve that option.
What I'm saying is, this county has got an extraordinarily modest amount of debt.
Even if we double it?
Even if you double it, given the tax base of this county at almost three point six billion, doubling the tax base of the, the, the debt of this county still leaves you with a very modest amount of debt, particularly considering that the modest amount of debt that you have now pays off in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So you, you've got a very modest amount of debt, and it pays off very quickly. But again, I can't predict now, I can't predict in August of twenty twenty-two. I certainly can't predict ten years down the road, what additional capital requirements that you may have. Your, your, your road bridge system may want new graders to, to, to fix the roads. They have additional bridges that you have to do. You may have additional flood mitigation that you have.
It would still be preferable then to do the long-term note.
In my opinion, in a very low interest rate environment, which is where we're at now and where I generally predict we will be in twenty twenty-two, I would not finance a major project like the courthouse as short as thirteen years.
So that would argue for waiting until May and doing a regular election on a new G O bond?
Not at all. Those are two completely different things. One's, one's got nothing to do with the other.
You would do a long-term tax note refinancing?
In August of twenty twenty-two, the county will have the opportunity to refinance this note, and you are not limited to seven years or even ten years from when you refinance that note. So in August of twenty twenty-two, you can take this seven-year note and turn it into a financing instrument that had a final maturity of twenty years from the date that this note is issued today.
Let's assume that in the eight, on August fifteenth of two thousand twenty-two, that the rates have actually doubled. What would be your position at that point in time?
If the interest rates doubled.
From where they are now.
Well, where they are now is two and a half percent, more or less, on a, on a non, you know, on a traditional transaction. So even if they doubled, they'd be five percent, which historically is still a very attractive interest rate. And again, I, I have no trouble in, in predicting that we can refinance that debt even at five percent in such a way that would not cause the, the total tax rate of the county in terms of its debt rate to, to go up.
You keep mentioning rate. The amount, the amount, total amount of debt service is the years, no matter what the rate is. And that, you'd have to go out longer.
You have to go out longer.
Result in more payments.
Yes.
That's my point.
But, but again, I mean, who, who among us, and I know I can't ask the general population question from the podium, but the standard residential home mortgage is thirty years. And, you know, people that have been in their homes for a long time try to refinance them at fifteen years. But the standard residential home mortgage is twenty years. You're talking about doing a thirteen or fourteen million dollar transaction and, and paying it off something in the neighborhood of thirteen years, which is very short. Excuse me.
I'm still in front of the podium. Email something when you get it. All right.
Eight to ten more minutes.
Keep talking.
Keep talking. Well, I'll keep answering questions or, or, you know, whatever the Commissioners Court wants. But where I was saying is, is that, you know, you've got a, a, a product here in terms of a, a, a new courthouse, and, and others can speak to it more eloquently than I, but it's, it's built to withstand hurricanes. It's built to withstand the tornadoes. You know, I've heard some people talk about the useful life of this thing being as high as fifty to seventy-five years. I'm not an architect. I don't know. But I'm just saying, I don't believe any of us, in terms of going out and buying a, 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 a new home, would expect to, to pay it off in thirteen years.
Our last courthouse lasted, what, Judge, sixty-two years?
Right at the S.
It sounds like what you're describing is a trade-off. We can do a long-term debt on this for a short term. Short term means less debt service total, because you don't have.
That's interesting. Yes, ma'am.
On the other hand, it doesn't preserve as much, on the other hand, it doesn't preserve as much freedom to load on a bunch of other debt for other projects if we can stretch the payments out over twenty years.
Exactly. I think everybody in the room thinks about how much they can make in car payments, given how much their mortgage payments are. And if you, if you take on too much in car payments, you can't pay a mortgage. If you take too much on a mortgage, you can't pay a car payment. So it's, it's simply a matter of meeting, you know, making sure that you have the latitude as a governing body to meet all of your financing requirements. This courthouse is a big deal for this county. A courthouse is a big deal for any county. But you also have to maintain your roads, maintain your bridges. Some, some counties have libraries. Some counties have senior citizens. You've got an airport. You've got landfill tipping stations. You've got a lot of capital infrastructure that means maintaining.
You're assuming we can't do that out of current tax revenues that we have to borrow constantly forever?
I'm not assuming anything, Commissioner. I'm informing you. I'm helping you remember that you have other obligations. Some of these things get paid for out of cash on hand. Others require financing. This is, this is the way the world works. You know, all, you know, how many people in the room go pay cash for a car?
I do.
Well, how many, in general, that's, that's not, that's not normal. And, and, and I can put on my professor hat, and we can really start talking, because when you think about a governmental entity that is supported through the tax base and the, the fact that you've got a fast-growing entity, is it really even prudent, let alone fair, to have existing taxpayers pay cash for an asset to facilitate growth that's going to benefit the taxpayers that aren't here yet by, by doing at least some modest borrowing? And I'm doing a transaction, for example, at Florisville Electric Light and Power. And there's been a lot of discussion of what is the correct mix between equity and, and borrowing? And, and we are going from a fifty-fifty mix to a sixty-forty mix. And it has to do with the, the, the streets that you do today, the courthouse that you do today, the airport that you do today, not only benefits your existing, but it facilitates growth, benefits the citizens that aren't here yet, and shouldn't the citizens that are coming in take advantage of these? Pay at least some percentage of the.
If they're going to have to be paying for them, shouldn't they have a right to vote on them? I'd rather wait and let them vote.
I think they vote by moving here and adding their properties to the tax rolls.
Yeah, that's not how voting works.
Well. Well. I, I've, I've, I've been a taxpayer in this county personally since nineteen eighty-four. I'm a taxpayer today. So I am not, and I own property in a lot of different places. So I'm, I certainly am not insensitive to, to tax question. But I am a finance person, and I understand the, the need to balance growth with adequate infrastructure and the ways to pay for that that provides maximum latitude for the governmental entities.
That involves saddling our grandchildren with it.
I'm sorry?
That involves saddling our grandchildren with it.
No, that's not true at all. Are your grandchildren going to be saddled in thirteen years? The debt's going to be paid off in thirteen years. So Commissioner, I think we're getting into philosophical, philosophical issues, and I'm willing to do that, but maybe we do that over a glass of wine somewhere.
You always get off on the philosophical issues. I take you up on it, and then you complain I'm getting into philosophical issues. We can go back to money. Just talk about rates again.
What would you like to hear?
Have you told us everything we need to know?
Okay. Any other comment questions?
Ms. Rutledge would like to speak.
Then when she's done, I have a general statement if we're finished talking about money. And we have other people who are interested. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Judge Mills and Commissioners. Again, my name is Kristi Rutledge, and I've resided in Precinct Three for eighteen years. Today, the court has decided to take up the issue of tax notes. And Judge Mills, this morning, you urged Commissioners to vote with you in favor of tax notes, stating that you have a fiduciary duty, responsibility to act in the best interest of the county. And regardless of your legislative authority or powers that you perceive is given to you to impose debt for the courthouse on taxpayers, public officials have a broad fiduciary duty to carry out their responsibilities in a manner that is faithful to the public trust that has been reposed in them. Bob Henderson has said previously that in all his years as a municipal advisor, the successful citizen petition that forced the county courthouse to a vote in the general election was only the second he has ever seen. How many times then have tax notes been passed after the certificates of obligation was forced to a general election bond and after that general election bond was defeated in the election by an overwhelming margin? My guess is zero. This court is considering taking a bold and upper-handed move that likely no Commissioners Court has ever taken before in our great state. Are you willing to set that precedence? A precedence that Mr. Henderson and Mr. Mendez and other debt brokers and bond councils will cite for years to come, and they will use that as power over citizens to get what they want, to pass whatever debt that they want regardless of a vote that has voted down that debt. They will set a precedence if you pass tax notes today that ultimately means this. Voters have no voice when it comes to municipal debt, even if they have rejected bond propositions in an election. You have a fiduciary duty, first and foremost, to protect the integrity of our elections and the public trust which has been given to you through your office. Just because the county's legal counsel tells you that you can pass tax notes, it doesn't mean that it's ethical or that you should violate the public trust in this way. What you are about to hear and what you have heard from Bob Henderson is that seven-year tax notes for a two-story courthouse has never been heard about before this few moments, and he hasn't even given you all the full details. The citizens have a right to have the information to review, and Commissioners, you must have all the information before you take a vote today. So I'm asking you to think logically about this. Let's not repeat what happened in July when we had a rush to vote for, for certificates of obligation and we increased the size of the courthouse and the cost for it by ten million dollars in a matter of minutes. Take your time. Let's get it right. Let's get it right. Get all the information from Mr. Henderson before you take a vote. Delay the vote. Make sure you know what you're getting us into. Because twenty years on a general obligation or a certificate of obligation is a lot different than seven years on a tax note. And the implications of taking away our votes in the election are much greater. And the implications of taking away our votes in the election are much greater than the length of the debt or whether it might be refinanced or what the rate is or all that other minutia that you guys are discussing today. So consider carefully your responsibility to the public trust and to have all the information and have an opportunity to review it before you take your vote today on tax notes. So I'm asking you to consider postponing this vote until Mr. Henderson and his team have given you an opportunity to take a full review. And that's the whole purpose of an election. We get the information in the election order and in the information regarding the bonds and everyone has had a chance to review. Commissioners, the public and everyone's trust is there because we know the details. Today, you don't have the details and I don't think you have the opportunity to take a well-informed vote. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Rutledge, you have a question. You referred to courthouse costing $10 million more on July 13th. Do you actually believe that?
Sir, what I believe is that in the middle of the July meeting, and I saw it with my, my own eyes, that the cost of the bonds changed by $10 million. The, no, 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 the amount that up to.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand.
You know why that amount was raised by $10 million?
Because it was a guess.
It was a guess. You're right.
That's right, and we should not be guessing.
You made a comment about the courthouse costing $10 million all of a sudden on the 13th of July. That didn't occur. So you're wrong on that. I think that you're misrepresenting what actually happened on that day.
From the voter's perspective, that did happen that day. And from the commissioner's perspective, the amount of the bond went from one thing to $10 million higher on a guess, on a guess of what it would cost to put a three-story on.
The actual number that, that the courthouse cost went up by going from 46 to 55 with $3.8 million.
I understand, but that wasn't clarified until after the meeting.
After you've been pressing forward on this $10 million situation.
Not, no, you've never seen me press forward on that.
Well, you just mentioned it while ago.
I mentioned it because that's actually what happened in the July meeting.
That's what, what?
That is because the issuance of the bond was up to 24 million and it increased $10 million in the matter of that July meeting.
It was raised to cover all contingency.
I understand, but it wasn't.
There was no, there was no set number as of that day.
And it wasn't clarified until after the meeting. And that's what will happen today. You won't have all the information and it won't be clarified until after this meeting. And you'll be asked to take a vote today unless you postpone on miss, on a lack of information. You'll be repeating what happened in July. And I think that we can learn from that meeting and the lack of public trust that was given based on your lack of information and our lack of information.
We didn't spend any money on July 13th. We did not commit to issuing 24 and a half million.
You committed to issuing up to $24 million.
Simply as a matter of practice required by the state. The notice. We weren't going to, no, 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 it was never going to cost that much money.
But it could have and you had the opportunity. Thank you very much.
I think we're getting a little out of hand. Mr. Hutt?
My name is Jeff Hutt, 1306 Lamar. It seems to me that we're having a couple of issues here. On this side of the wall, you guys are talking about fiduciary responsibility and this side we're talking about the right to honor an election and these things. And what I think is we're missing something here is if you look at the American tradition, it started in about 1765, it started with the idea of. Natural rights and the whole idea of taxation without representation did not come out of some strange left field. It came out because people at that time looked at the way that their government was treating them and looked at the way their government was functioning and they realized that it was bad, that if you don't have consent from the governed, the decisions that government makes are bad. From, from the very get-go, this has been a bad deal in terms of the information given, the way it's gone. It seems like if we're, if we're going to do what's right, we need to trust the people. And the people told you guys that we want you to come back in May with a better plan, that that is the fiduciary responsibility that the people took. They took it off of your hands and we took it on, we, we brought it on ours. 53% of the population voted for, over 53, for you guys to bring it back to us in May. This is after y'all created a PAC that spent over $10,000 saturation, misinformation that we could lose up to $10 million if we didn't vote for this. Also, y'all told us that we could lose the Celebration Plaza and the community center if we didn't vote for this, which the G L O confirmed. That's not the case. That's a separate thing. After all, after Mrs. Laubach came out in support of it, the courthouse, after all of these things, citizens still voted 53% that says, we don't want this courthouse now. We want us to, we want you to bring us back in May with a courthouse, have citizen input on it and we'll vote for it. And if you go through the steps and gain consent, then when it comes in May, we'll vote for it. You, the fiduciary responsibility has been taken off you and has been taken by us.
I have a really short statement, if I may make it now.
Sure.
I continue to object to the issuance of tax notes in lieu of putting the courthouse financing issue to the voters in May 2021. Regardless of whether the language that we approved in the election order dated August 2020 is ultimately judged to bear on this decision as purely legal matter, either way, I believe we let people vote in the November 2020 election with the understanding that their vote would mean something and that we understood that it would be wrong to circumvent their right to vote. We used language implying that understanding. If we always intended to hold the tax note option in reserve in case we lost the election, I was not aware of that plan. I believe the taxpayers of this county should have been told of those plans to hold the tax notes in reserve before they voted. They had a right to know that the county was determined to borrow this money no matter what they thought about it and that in that case, we'd be driven to doing so under circumstances that would raise the cost of the borrowing and expose us to risk of a substantial tax hike after three years if refinancing turns out not to be feasible according to rates at that time. I just believe that we owe the taxpayers the, the courtesy of giving them what we implied they were entitled to, which is the May 2021 election. I believe we can get to work figuring out how not to let that delay hurt the plans and that all we've done now is force desperate taxpayers to the extremity of filing a pro se piece of litigation, which is raising our costs and costing them a lot as well. And it never needed to happen that way in the first place.
Well. Oh, I'm sorry.
As I introduce myself this morning, I'm Ronnie Sampson. I live at 106 Ridge Harbor Drive in Precinct Four, in District Four. Ms. Wendy is my commissioner and I greatly appreciate her information, the way she informs the community. We have problems. The people have problems because we elect you folks to serve us, to serve our needs in our community, to be our leaders, but you have to listen to us because it is the voice of the people that elects you to your positions. You are accountable to us. No one else. What do you want your legacy to be? That your grandchildren and your great-grandchildren here? I want my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren to know that I too stood up for the Constitution. I too stood up for taxation without representation. And what you've done to us is made us feel that way, whether that was your intent or not. I'm new to this community. I want to be a part of it. I love the people of this community. That's why we bought a home here. We didn't buy a home here to be under, I don't know what you'd even call it, because you people say one thing and turn around and do another. And I also listened to that July 13th Zoom that was on YouTube and I disagree with you in your reflection of the $10 million because that is how it came off to the, to the taxpayers of Aransas County. We went from having what you were offering as a two-story courthouse that the majority of us were on board for to a three-story courthouse in that much time. And not once did you even consider how the people would feel about that. Is that the legacy you want? It's on your shoulders, your shoulders. Think twice.
Your Honor, members of the court, we have final numbers.
We've called all law and we've never asked the court to take action without final numbers. And here they are. We have a deposit to the construction fund, $13,400,000 for the estimates provided by your construction manager at risk. Because of the couponing, which involves 3% coupons versus the yields, the stated par will be $13,230,000. Reflecting historically low interest rates, we've got an arbitrage yield which reflects the volume yield that the. Factors are earned at 0.884108%. So, so less than 1%. They did need to debunk, it was called the ALL NTIC. Explain that. True interest cost and it's a calculation that's based upon all of the costs being involved, all these from all the various professionals, the salespeople and so forth, legal ratings and so forth, calculated to the final maturity of seven years. The ALL NTIC is 2.700846. So.
Say that again. Sorry. Bob made that number again. 2.0.
0.
Thanks.
So slightly less. 2.75%. We talked this morning about what kind of interest rates. I was comfortable, I was confident they'd be under 3% and hoped. Didn't quite get there. The, the, the additional. Sorry. I'm often told.
Bob, is that reflecting the difference, the premium that's being paid for the bonds?
Yes.
2.7 is the net.
That, that's, that's the ALL NTIC, including the premium for the forward delivery and the negative impact of lawsuits and so forth.
Now, so. Bob, I apologize. I wrote down 2.700846. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So if we were assuming that we were going to have a 2.25, we're looking at about a four, five, 45 basis points differential then, right?
Yes, sir. And part of that has been the interest rate, general market changes since, since setting up for the November election and then about 24 points is about having to do with the premium.
So the rates have actually gone up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
So there's no guessing as to what the documents will say. There's no guessing as to what the numbers were, what the terms are. It's all black and white. Mr. Mendez's team has received these information and they're being incorporated into what's known as the bond purchase agreement. So this will be locked into stone based upon action by the commissioners court.
If a subsequent court, commissioners court wants to refund these bonds and lengthen it out, we would be paying the $13.2 million principal at that point in time?
Yes, sir. That, that's, that's the par amount that would be.
We're going to get 13 for, but we're only going to have to redeem 13.2.
Right. And again, that's the difference between the coupons and the re-offering.
I got you.
Happy to answer any further questions. There's no guessing at this point. This is all locked in.
With the fact that there's no guessing, I'll make the motion to order 0262020 authorizing the issuance of Aransas County tax, limited tax notes, series 2021, leveling a continuing direct annual ad verum tax on all taxable properties within the county to pay the principal and interest on, on said notes and to create a sinking fund for the redemption thereof and assessment of collection of such taxes, authorizing the sale thereof and enacting provisions incident and related to the issuance of these notes. I have a second.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Three, four?
I'll bet four.
Four, four, one against.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Announce.
I think Jack Cheney.
Jack Cheney seconded.
The judge moved. I made the motion.